Site plan review and approval, but actually we are not going to approve a site plan. Our lawyer has brought up a very interesting conundrum here in the fact that there is actually no local village law or ordinance which says that we have the capability to approve a site plan, but we will make a positive or negative recommendation to the village board to accept or deny the site plan. So, the site plan will be reviewed this evening and it is 11 Orchard Street, Webster, New York, to construct a warehouse, loading dock, driveway, and associated parking pursuant to the G.I. Village Code, Section 87524, tax ID 0806-1222, property zone G.I. General Industrial. And we have Greg McMahon, let's see, I remember you from years ago, who's going to give us a little dissertation on what the plan is.
All right, again, my name is Greg McMahon with McMahon of the Room. The plan, as you noted, is at 11 Orchard Street. It's a warehouse building just under 12,000 square feet with, I think we've got eight parking spots, driveway entrance off of Orchard, and a turn here to allow the tractor trailers to pull in, back in and unload and pull back out. The majority of the site will remain green space. There'll be a sanitary sewer connection, a water service connection for the building, and again, you know, a broad brush covers a majority of the work that's being proposed. At this point, we can answer any questions, if I may.
Okay. Underground gas connection, I assume?
Uh, gas and electric, yeah, that will be handled directly between the builder and our G and E, but as those utilities are available, gas and electric will be underground.
Okay. I noticed in the package you gave us, you gave us a, I don't know, a view or someone gave us a rendering of the proposed structure itself?
Uh, yes, that was provided by the owners.
Okay. Just want to make a couple of notifications here, this rendering does not reflect the actual construction of the building. They state on your plan that the, there will be a raised loading dock area, this shows it as flush to grade, so there will be, they showed a mandor into the loading dock area at grade level, so obviously that's not right. I see on your plan, we've got a little square in a corner, I assume that's steps?
Yeah, so that's steps, we go up to it, our understanding is it's going to be capable of, you know, a truck can back in there and load and unload, so the door's up somewhere in the four-foot range, which is a typical height for looking down.
And just as one point of order, you keep referencing 11,000 odd square feet, do I calculate 12,020?
Well, it's actually, and again, I'm here tonight representing Al Maru, who actually did this, he's at Williamson at another major, about 11,940 square feet.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just looking at covered roofed area, I mean, in simple math, eighty by one thirty-eight, thirty by thirty-six, add those two together, you get 12,120, but it's some semantics. All right, anyone else?
So Greg, you know, I'm going to ask about stormwater because we're going from a field to a pervious surface, so...
Yeah, it's, my understanding, and again, I can help verify, is the intent was to keep the disturbance under an acre, but as I, as I heard you discuss earlier with the town, for over twenty-five, exceeding 25,000 square feet, do require a slip, erosion control measures and so forth, and Greg, we'll certainly prepare that document as his job is for it.
Yeah, and you'll, yeah, a stormwater pond or something in order to, you know, mitigate the additional runoff, so...
We'll, we'll have to take a look whether it's a rain garden or something, it's a rain.
Right, right. And do we know what the building is going to be made of, or is it just, you know, like...
I don't, I can speak, the building is going to be metal.
Metal?
Yeah.
Encircled cage?
Yes.
Metal structure?
Yeah. So the trusses are wood, the posts are wood, but everything else is metal, inside and out, roof, sides.
See, it'd be sort of nice to have some architectural rendering of what it would look like, because...
Well, I kind of gave you one there, that was done, not right, you're right, but the loading dock will be four feet in, up, and then there'll be a settle roof onto the other roof.
Well, I just, I'm afraid how plain it's going to look, and you're coming into the village from, you know, Phillips Road or whatever, and you're entering the village, I think we, maybe we'd want something that's more appealing than a metal-framed, you know, seam building, but again, that's just my opinion on, on the, so, and then, you gonna have any signage for the...
No, we need any signage.
Okay. Is this just strictly for a backup for the main building, or is this like, people are going to come here, customers are going to come here and all that stuff?
Well, we run our wholesale business out of there, so there will be people picking product out there, yes. The problem is, we, we're under the gun because our trucking companies are mandating we have loading docks, and we don't have a loading dock. So, right now, we're on a contract with them, they're charging us $1,000 a drop until we have a loading dock. We tried to put it in next to the, next to the florist, and it just, it just didn't work, it was too tight. Then we were going to go down between Masonic Temple and my mother's house, and there was too many utilities in there, and the trucks won't back in off the road, they want to drive in and drive out. So that piece of property wasn't working either, so that's why we looked at the property across the street, which allows the tractor trailers to pull in, make their loop, back up and pull out.
So are these like full-size tractor trailers?
Yeah.
So, I'd be curious on a turning temple.
It's ninety feet.
Yeah, I guess.
Yes, we use, we put, we put turning temples on there, we just show the radius, but that's, that was, the turning radius for a tractor trailer is forty-five feet.
So is there offices in this building? I mean, like, is it really just drop off the flowers and it's kind of stored there and...
Well, they're going to use it for other storage of our product that we need for our events and our weddings, and, you know, we're just kind of busting at the seams where we are now, and we really don't have any room to head out where we are, so this will be an extension.
Okay.
We'll run our deliveries out of there in the holidays.
I'm just curious about, you know, is the number of parking spots enough, or if you have, you know, people working there and then people picking up stuff and, you know...
Well, there might be one or two employees in there, I said.
Because there's no parking calculations on here as far as what the code requires, and, I mean, we know what's proposed, but does that need it?
So you said wholesale business?
We run our wholesale, floral wholesale business out of, we will run it out of there instead of where it is now, at Killers.
Are there going to be any ADA requirements?
Well, yeah.
Right, you're gonna have, you're gonna have a handicap parking space, you're gonna have to have ADA ramp, rampage of...
We have one split space shown, there's, where is one handicap space provided? That's all that's required by code.
Okay.
Now, it looks like there's encroachment from the Jason House that's on this property?
Yeah, driveway did encroach us, but it is basically the same family.
Yeah, it's my house.
Yeah.
I'm just worried about when we decide to sell this, or sell the house, and then...
Doesn't want to cut the driveway off and...
The encroachment is in the sixty-foot.
In the record, if you state your name and address.
Sure, Phil Ward.
Mainly address is 263 North Avenue, my residence is 15 Orchard.
Thank you. Anyone else? Cap, Bill, Larry?
What's the, what's the name of the, is it Panama Road?
Uh, yeah, it's Panama.
Yeah, Panama's, uh... Is that the road into the senior center?
Yeah.
Okay, because I, I wish there was someone to put a sign up there, but...
It's a private road. The seat, the, if you're talking about the Town Reformation Center, that's on Toyota Drive.
Right.
This Panama goes into Toyota, but it's a private drive that Zerox owns, so you can't just put up a sign, if Zerox wants to put up a sign, they can, but why wouldn't they do that?
What kind of sign are you talking about?
Telling people where the senior center is.
Oh, oh, oh.
Well, there is a sign out there now that says, what's the Town Reformation Center?
The senior, I had, I had trouble exact, placing exactly where this warehouse was going to be, and I was looking for Panama Road, couldn't find it, so I assumed...
This is right across the street from the Masonic Temple.
I saw it was the road, you know, the road into the, into the senior center, or Orchard Street.
I also had our, our village zoning, uh, meeting sign out there.
Right.
Our sign is out there as well, stating there's a meeting.
The property is right across the street from the Masonic Temple, at Orchard Street.
Actually, I didn't pick it up there, it's still there.
One question that I just didn't quite understand on page two of our contact information et cetera, number six, is any site plan subdivision approval affecting this property been previously granted? It says yes. So what is that? And what does it include?
I don't know, I went by the title because we never applied for anything on this piece of property. I, yeah, I can't answer that, I don't, why did it check yes? It's, uh, there is, this is not a, this is an existing lot, and we're not proposing to change its boundaries development.
Well, was it one big lot and they subdivided it to build the house?
Yeah, we did, we did subdivide it to build the house.
Yeah, see, that's, that's probably what happened.
Yeah, so, yeah, a long day, a number of years ago, and certainly it was probably part of a larger piece of it, has been divided over, over the years, but not specific to this application.
You could go back far enough, it was part of the farm.
Yeah, it was part of the farm, right.
Okay, anyone else? Questions?
You know, you asked about parking, and I think, you know, poetic concept, you buy fifty-three parking requirements, industrial warehousing or manufacturing is statute, one for each 500 square feet of gross floor area. So if you've got 12,000 square feet, that's 24 spaces, and you've got just a couple.
Right.
So that would require a variance.
Well, we could also put parking in on the, on the east side of the building, all along front of the building, if you want.
Well, that's up to you, but we're just going off the plan there as submitted.
Yeah, I, you know, personally, it wouldn't make, to construct parking for the sake of parking doesn't make much sense, it just increase, increases impervious area. If the intended is to, to function as a warehouse and they're going to have two employees and, and most of the, the deliveries are coming by truck, and the wholesale is going out typically by truck or van, it's, there aren't going to be customers coming into this facility.
Well, I kind of agree with that, but the problem is, is let's say, hopefully it's a long time, forty years down the road, it's sold, if we, if we need to have a site plan that maybe has land bank parking in there, I agree, if he only needs, you know, six or whatever it is, eight, eight spots, you know, but we need to show a plan that has, all right, we can put parking here, we can do this, we can do that, just as, you know, the next person that comes in and says, well, there's your approved plan, that we can automatically put the...
I understand.
So again, that's going to change.
Or, or you can apply for a variance from this board to the parking requirements, but...
Well, I think we probably could change our drawing to...
As a separate obligation.
And we, no, we can certainly add parking, I, I don't know specifically, does the village permit bank parking? Is that an option?
Yeah, I think if you show what it meets code and you put land bank parking in, I mean, that's whoever's, if it's the village board that approves the site plan, I would think that would be, you know, easier than applying for a variance, I mean, you might get both, but...
Yeah, well, I, I think from the standpoint of also, as you say, in forty years, there's, you know, someday this is sold to somebody else who does a different business, and we have the bank parking, they can choose at that time to pave that, pave that area, and the owners don't have to go to that expense right now.
Well, what, what, Village Code 17553G, reservation of parking areas, up to 25% of the parking spaces required in subsection A, that's the 24, may be landscaped and reserved for future parking upon approval of the zoning board of appeals. So, I don't know what 25% of 24 is, but...
Six.
Huh?
Six.
It's about six.
So, so that means 24 minus six, you gotta show eighteen spaces, unless you want to get a variance.
All right, I'll, I'll have to pick that up, I, I can't answer that question right now.
And then I guess one last question, which is probably semantics, but do we have to do abandonment of the sixty-foot highway for the reservation for future street? I think that would be an encumbrance on...
Up in the corner up here.
This is future access to this parcel, unless it comes off a private road up Panama? But Panama belongs to Zerox?
Yeah. And I don't know if that was, if this was Zerox once before, or...
Well, my grandfather owned all the way down to Phillips Road originally, but he sold the Zerox, yes. This Melvin Act is going to happen, ruled off of Panama.
Well, right, that's why, but then he wouldn't want the encumbrance on his property, it's having a future right-of-way easement on there, I'd try to abandon this, bring it up from your parcel.
There actually, there is not a filed easement, it's, it was referenced on a filed subdivision plan, so we've run into this before too, where easements are shown on a subplan, but the actual easement never gets filed as a document, so I forget, this is, the legal people have to, have to address that, but it, it is on there as referenced on a filed subplan.
So I guess, Don, what would be your opinion on, on that, if it's a, if it's shown on a plan to be, that never was filed?
But this was filed, it was filed in the county courts office.
Right, so, but there was no easement actually filed, the plan was...
Well, you, you'd only...
So is it showing intent, therefore it's still there?
Well, it depends, whether it's, you know, if it was going to be a dedicated road, there wouldn't be an easement anyhow, it would be a dedication, there'd be a deed, where the, the village would actually own the land, so because it's on a filed subdivision map, it exists, and either, either you got to, you know, amend that subdivision map, or, you know, you can't, you can't ignore it.
Well, no, so then I'm just getting your interpretation of...
So I don't know where the, so, I guess, what's the setback for the sixty feet to the back of the building? You don't show there, so, you know, if it meets zoning, if they ever build a road in there, then it's no problem, right? They, they show it, they show it here, right? So, it's a sixty, but this is sixty feet around here?
If this is a sixty...
So it's about an eighty-foot setback.
Future highway, easy to have the...
I mean, well, you know, like very...
For the property.
And so what's, uh, the general industrial, what's that, is that the rear, is that the rear or the front, or the side? I think that's the side.
Yeah.
So, you got to look at those, let me try.
Hey, Don? And your, if there is an existing sixty-foot wide reservation for future street, would the setback line be from the sixty-foot line, or from the property line of the adjacent property? Because obviously now there's an overlap.
Well...
Hmm?
What should, what the concern should be is, is the, is the side setback, because that's the side of the building, twenty feet, and in a general industrial zone, you need a twenty-foot setback, and it looks like, it looks like the, it's thirty feet from the back of the building, so it wouldn't be an issue.
What I'm talking about...
This is the side.
You measure the setbacks from the building.
Oh, I'm just looking at the setback line that he has drawn on there. Oh, if it's thirty feet from to the back of the building, well, okay.
How long are they?
This is sixty, this is one hundred and sixty, the total distance.
So he, he's got...
Thirty feet from here, he had to have twenty.
Yeah.
But this four...
It's a corner lot, so, in a corner lot, are there two rear ones?
This is sixty, that one is a, this whole thing is a nine, so that's six hundred and eighty, thirty more to get to that building.
Right, so he's showing the side setback as forty feet.
What's your corner? Is it a forty, right?
Well, setback's for the rear, it's a corner lot, so which are the, you know, does this have a side setback? Yeah, I'll give the definition in the definition section.
According to the application, minimum required yard areas, side yard forty feet, what's the setback?
For a side yard, it's twenty feet, the rear setback is forty feet.
What's the front setback?
Front yard.
Well, the front setback is forty feet, for a front setback. It doesn't really say, it doesn't define, on a corner lot, which are the sides, so...
I mean, no matter what they got, in the, what they put, they say, what we got, is...
Where's the front, is it, is this, where's the entrance on this thing? No, where's the door? Get in, the people are going to walk in.
The man door?
So this is the front of the building?
The front of the building will be on Orchard Street side, which is the eighty-foot end of the building.
Well, so, I, I don't think the, the highway reservation is an issue, because I think that's the side, that would be the side yard.
I was just making the recommendation that they abandon it, so it doesn't cause future headaches, is all I'm saying, right?
Well, you're assuming that both the village and the town wanted it to be abandoned. There, there was a reason, but...
It's private property.
Well, but there was a reason when the subdivision was approved, that someone wanted to put that in there, I doubt the property owners just voluntarily did it.
Well, I, I believe this goes way back to my grandfather when they were going to build a hotel there, and there was a group of businessmen in Webster, and I think that's where this, and I didn't even know that existed still, but I, I believe that's where that was drawn up, that would have been back in the sixties.
Yeah, well, I, I would just leave alone, I'd just leave it there.
Okay.
It's the only thing I can think of that, that right away.
Is there other access to the back parcel behind you?
Well, there will be, we'll have a lane down the, the east side of the road, where there's, with the turnaround of, that's going to be an access, and we also have access off of 250.
This the side?
Off the left, I'm sorry.
Off of 250?
This the rear.
Oh, the front.
New Green Road.
Okay.
And I, I guess, and I guess I reiterate, it would be nice to have some architectural renderings of this building, because it's the only one you get.
All right, that was thrown together quickly, I thought it was...
Oh, no, 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 well, that's okay, but you said the side facing Orchard Street's going to be the front, well, that's this side and it doesn't show any door, the doors are on, on the other side, so where the doors are, that's the front. You, you can't have a front without a way to get it, that's how it's defined. So, so then that would make, if this is the front that faces Panama, then the rear is a forty-foot setback, which does encroach into that highway reservation.
All right, so we'll put a door on the front.
Well, okay, that's fine.
Just take over, just one of the windows, become a door.
Okay. All right.
The letters that were sent out, did you get any positive or negative feedback from anybody?
No, we didn't receive anything back from the notifications, because I don't know. I did have a couple of phone calls and there was, there was no issues.
I think the only resident is actually the house next to it, right?
Um, my house, my mother lives across the street and then Masonic Temple, Zerox.
And then the, the lodge is across the street.
It's not, yeah, it's not a lodge.
Right, so that's not a residence?
They, they called me, and then the board had no issues with it.
No issues?
Nope, no issues whatsoever, and then we had another call, they just wanted to know what was going on.
Okay. Any other discussion on the board? Anybody else? Any other thoughts? Questions? All right. So, since we are not, Don, is there a public portion to this meeting?
There is no legal requirement to open it to the public, but if you want to do that, you certainly can.
Okay, well, I will open it up for public comment, only because I know Rick always has something to say, and I, I like to hear what you're, what you have to say. Do you have words of wisdom?
I have no objection whatsoever to this project, this family's been in Webster as long as I have, which means they've been around forever, and they want to run a very good business, and I think it's wonderful that they're expanding, so I'm in favor of the project.
See, that's what I'm... Okay, well, anyone else? That'll close the public portion, back to the board, anything else? Comments? Okay? Good? All right, so, um, before I, Don, might even ask him for a motion here?
Well, if, if, if the board wants to make a recommendation to the board trustees, it can, and, you know, it might be help, if you do so, it might be helpful to list the concerns that the... and, you know, it might be help, if you do so, it might be helpful to list the concerns that, that need to get addressed.
So we can certainly attach the requests for architectural rendering, colors, whatnots?
You know, the, the parking, the, the front of the building, the door, yeah, and the, all that stuff. Plus, plus you need a, you gotta come tie with the stormwater.
Oh, yeah, all right. And since they included the short form environmental, should I quickly?
That'll, that's, since, since the village board, because the village board is the actual approving agency, the village board will figure it out.
So it's not...
So you want to be able to...
Okay. So... I will start entertaining motions now for the various, well, first off, positive or negative recommendations to the village board for approval for the construction of this project with associated commentary to be addressed, architectural rendering, color selection, placement of the front door, if it's going to be, the front of the building is going to be Orchard Street, then show us a rendering with the door on Orchard Street. The parking situation, show future parking expansion, where necessary to meet code requirements. Stormwater issues be addressed.
Did you say a new rendering of the building?
I'm sorry?
Did you say a new rendering of the building?
Yes, architect, proper render of the building, you know, door placement of the building, elevation of the loading dock, show how it's supposed to.
Okay, I will make that motion, for positive recommendations of the village board.
Exactly.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I? Opposed? Okay, motion is passed to make a positive recommendation to the village board for approval for the project with the questions attached to be addressed at that time.
Could I ask, when would this go before the village board?
Uh, next Tuesday.
Well, again, possible.
We can get that together.
Well, it's up to them, you gotta get, well, stormwater stuff, can you do all this between now and Tuesday?
I, I would, the renderings and everything, I, I don't think so, I, I give hints here.
You know, so the, the next, the next meeting would then be January 13th. The village board meets on the second and fourth Thursdays.
Is there a deadline requirement for the village board?
Only if, no, no, only if a public hearing is required, because a public hearing isn't required, rather. There's no, there's no notice, there's no notice required. No, no, so... So it'd be the, it'd be the 13th?
Is the rendering just of the building or of the whole site plan?
Just the building. You know, so you see the color, the color of it and the materials.
By the time, so we can't do anything, we can't start any, any site work or anything until after January.
If we can't do it next Tuesday, I think the only thing essentially that you would need is the, is the SWIP stuff, the stormwater sewer. Because if we get the renderings of the building, if you have those showing, you know, showing...
But you have to, you have to make a decision on what you're doing about the parking, because if, if you're going to ask for a variance, then that requires a public hearing and proper notice back to this board.
Can Al get back to you tomorrow?
Yes.
I think he needs to have the discussions on what we need to do, I don't want to...
No, that's fine, and I just want to let you know, and, and the, this board would next meet January 20th, the third Thursday, if you want a variance, so...
Okay.
The parking spots can be landscaped right now? Can I translate correctly?
We can do, we can landscape up to six out of the 24, and show us future. We would have to provide paid parking for 18...
So maybe 10 more spots.
10, 18 cars, and six additional could be landscaped, and that would be...
Right.
And we could do that without a variance. So, yeah, that, but I'll have Al call the village tomorrow, and once he's able to confirm everything about next Tuesday, so I don't want to rule that out, coming before the town, or the village board hits.
The other, the other issue with the village board is they've decided to meet remotely, which is cumbersome, especially for something like this, Zoom, and I guess I would encourage the board to change its mind. If they're, you know, because they obviously didn't, it was a really short agenda, so meeting by Zoom was not a big deal at the time, but to have them consider this, I think it should be in person. Don't you, Carol? Everybody just wear masks.
Right, same thing we're doing tonight.
Would you, would you support that or not?
I'm not going to get into the vaccination stuff and all that.
Well, that's a whole number issue, you know.
But my, my, my problem is time is of the essence. Companies have a gun to our head, and there's nothing we can do.
Right, yeah. I just think trying, trying to educate the village board via Zoom as to what you're trying to do is not the best way to go.
I agree.
So, I, I would, I would, if, if you can make it next Tuesday, I will strongly urge the mayor to change his mind and make it a regular in-person meeting, just everybody, just like today, everybody wears a mask.
I have no control over it though, Don, so...
Well, I know, I guess that's up to your engineer architect or...
I'm talking about the in-person meeting.
Well, I know you have no control of it, but to the extent I have any control over it, and Carol has any control over it, he's on the board, we'll try to convince the mayor, who wanted the Zoom meeting, that let's not do a Zoom meeting, let's do it in person.
I appreciate that.
I have a question regarding, so we add more parking spots, what ramifications would it be for the ground disturbance? Would that be a whole nother problem if we added more spots?
Yes, we would exceed an acre, which then, I mean, puts us within, to, we have to get a stormwater permit from the DEC. That's, that's another step in the process, so that involves weekly stormwater inspections during the construction, and it brings some additional requirements in.
Well, there is a big ditch right there that runs along Panama Road, but the village, I think the village owns that.
There's D C regulations that we have to maintain.
Right, I'm just saying, there's a, there's a main ditch that runs down...
I know, but, right, that doesn't necessarily mean that you can dump your water into it. Generally speaking, development projects have to contain their water on their site.
You're supposed to, when your water leaves your site, it's supposed to be as if it was today, right now it's a field. So there's probably very little runoff leaving the site. When you add impervious surface, and rain comes, that concentrates everything and makes the water runoff higher, so now there's potential flooding down the road. So, the D C mandates all the municipalities to dictate this, so it's out of our control. We're just, because this plant, to me, is over an acre of disturbance already. There's semantics in the way the disturbance limit is drawn, that you're probably over an acre, so that already kicks you into an NOI with the D C, and then that requires stormwater mitigation.
Well, we'll have to, we'll have to look at all those things, and I'll get that from Al, and we'll just shrink the building to, so we do away with the problems.
You could do that.
You will.
But you have, getting out of this place, you do have the green space to work, potentially, to address any SWIP issues. Where, you know, maybe you just have to have a small retention bond behind the building, I mean, there are ways to handle it.
Can I ask you a question? If you want quicker approval, could the village give them a tentative go-ahead pending approval of coming back for an easement for the parking? Could that be handled that way?
No, there's no easement for the parking.
Oh, no, if they decide to stay with the smaller parking now, with a variance for that?
We're, we're doing a lot of what ifs, let's talk to Al in the morning, we'll get it, and they'll agree. We can what if this, to that follow-up, seriously, you know what I mean? And that's all we're doing right now.
Yeah.
So...
Let us have a discussion with the owners, and then talk to you tomorrow.
Because if there's some adjustments that, like he already said, could be made, and it's, it's easy enough, or if you or Al say, no, we can do this little minor thing to keep what's there, and you just need to do a little form of D C or this or that, I'm just saying. Let's just do it, do it right, so it doesn't, you know, come back to bite you later on.
I agree.
Just so you understand, the takeaway tonight is there is no violent opposition to this development, you understand?
I appreciate that.
It's just details, that one's always there, details, so take care of the details in the project.
I appreciate your time.
Yeah, and the, and like Mike said, the stormwater stuff is largely out of the village hands, it's all dictated by the state in order.
That's why we shrink it, we shrink it a little bit to get under these numbers, and...
Well, that's up to you, whatever.
It's totally up to you, but then I'm just going to be happy in the end, is my concern as well.
Because you do have plenty of room to take care of the stormwater, because the, you know, the, the parcel of the land is big enough.
I know you're in a rush, but I, I mean, unfortunately...
You know, you don't want, you don't want to put yourself, you know, five, 10 years from now wishing, I wish I, we would have gone to the 12,000 square foot building instead of reducing it.
Right.
I understand. So, give me a call tomorrow, I'll call Al, talk to him, if he needs me to meet you down there, I'll meet you down there.
I appreciate that.
Yep. Here's who needs to meet at Al's office, I got time tomorrow.
And if you can get everything together by Tuesday, you know, the village board will, the village board will do its best to accommodate it.
Right, I'm going to, I'm going to push for that.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.